Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission, May 18th, 2022. And we'd like to start off with the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America. A true and a public, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we get a roll call, Chair?
Mr. Pecusa, Ms. Kribda.
Here.
Mr. Walker.
Here.
Ms. Montgomery. Ms. Lawrence.
Here.
Mr. Masong.
Here.
Mr. Petoni.
Here.
Mr. Weldon.
Here.
Next, I'd like to go over the approval of the last meeting's minutes. Are there any corrections, any additions, does anybody have any objections, and would somebody motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Second? Okay, roll call.
Ms. Kribda? Ms. Kribda?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Masong?
Yes.
Mr. Petoni?
Yes.
Okay, I guess we have any old, that covers the old business.
Old business.
The new business, do you want to read the first one?
Sure. New business, first item, 22-1-Z Law Funeral Home. Applicant is requesting to rezone the portion of tax parcel 857M195 that is currently zoned R1, single-family residential to C2 business commercial. The total area of the property is 4.411 acres, and the property is located at 2555 Haymaker Road.
Anybody want to come forward, please? And you could sign in and state your name.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board.
Good evening.
My name is Thomas Lonich. I'm an attorney licensed in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. I currently maintain my office in the city of Washington, Little Washington down the road there. I'm here on behalf of Home of Law, Law Funeral Home. With me tonight are Mr. and Mrs. Law, and we are requesting that a piece of property, which is currently zoned R1, be rezoned to C2. And we're asking the Planning Commission for a favorable recommendation of that rezoning. I have some documents and exhibits, and I do have a map that may make it a lot easier for everybody.
You just lay it on the table there in front of you, there's like a little tape X, and the camera above you will pick it up. Give them a second to focus on it. And if you want to rotate it or anything, go right ahead. Orient it towards yourself like you're looking at it.
I was going to say, whatever is easier so the board can see it, I think maybe that may be most important.
And then, if you want to, since it looks like you're split half and half, if you, yeah, if you want to do half at a time, do it that way.
There you go. The map that's on the screen is the map that had been provided to me by your zoning officer, and is the zoning map for Monroeville. If you look at this property here, up to this corner, almost a triangle, that's the property that we're seeking the rezoning. It's currently the residential, and so we'd like to get that moved to C2. Now, the property, so I'll show you on the bottom map, which is the... I'll flip it this way. This is the survey that had been done originally of the property. So it mirrors what I showed you from the zoning map, and it is basically this triangle right here. On the map, it's lots 1, 2, and 3. And I had provided to the court reporter prior to the hearing, these maps I've marked as Exhibits 1 and 1A. I have the deed which establishes the ownership of the property by Home of Law LLC for these lots 1, 2, and 3. That had been provided, and I had marked that as Exhibit 2. I have a number of photos that will help, I think, to better describe the property. And I can just quickly go over some of these with you to give you an idea. I'm sure you're all familiar with where that property is. It was what's... This is like backing up a truck and I have to turn it one way and move the other. It is the property that was once known as the Trinity Lutheran Church. The building itself still remains there, and the purpose of the rezoning will be to allow Mr. and Mrs. Law to operate that building as a funeral home and any accessory uses associated with a funeral home. The building is, as stated, there may be some modifications inside so as to make it compatible for use of funeral home, but there is no intent to raise that building to have construction, to have any difficulties with any type of equipment or anything like that toward that building. So it would remain. This picture is taken from Haymaker Road. So I'm Haymaker Road looking at the building, and there is a guardrail that goes along there. This is another photo looking straight at the building. The parking lot remains. Again, what would be to the right of the photos is Haymaker Road and that guardrail. This is a picture taken along Haymaker Road. You'll see the guardrail is to the right, that's the entrance to the property. This is the photo of the building from what would be across the parking lot area. And notably, and there are some other pictures, but what I wanted to point out to the board is that there is an interior access road, so you come off of Haymaker and you go right into the parking lot. And as you can see, it circles the parking lot. That, I'm sure, served the church well and would continue to serve the use as a funeral home because it removes any backup onto the roadway of any dock, of any cars. They would just come in, park, and get head out one way or the other.
So are there adjacent residential properties to this property that you want to, that are?
There are.
There are?
Yes.
And they are residential, are two or ones?
They are ones.
Okay.
And I can show you those.
Are there any other commercial properties within the proximity of this?
Yes, ma'am. This property adjoins and abuts. This may be the easier way to do it because it's color-coded. And so, from your zoning map, as you can see, everything in red, so what would be to the upper corner, all of that is commercial property.
Is that across the street from this, or no?
Can you, can you point out Haymaker Road and Moss Side Boulevard?
This is Haymaker. This is the subject property right here, and then Moss is along this route. So, and I have some photos. What separates the subject property to the commercial property is basically a hillside. And it has trees and things like that, it has a natural buffer zone through all of this, as well as, that's the type of topography along this area here. These are the residential homes that abuts. But, and I'll show you some photos. However, again, there is a natural buffer that's, oh, probably at least 50, 60 feet, I think. The hillside, I'm going to refer to it as a gully on that side.
Does anyone have any questions that, you know, that they'd like to ask?
There is a concern, Counselor, that I wanted to bring to your attention. It is currently zoned R1, as we discussed.
Yes.
With you requesting for it to go to a C2, I think our concern is that once it would be put in a C2 business commercial zoning, that we would be hesitant because of believing that at some given point in time, we can never go back to an R1. So if it would be approved for the C2, we don't really know, as time goes on, what could really happen to that property. And it's a concern to the community.
I understand that that's a concern, and I was going to get to that point.
It's difficult because you can, once it's rezoned, it can, and, you know, it can't be rezoned with conditions, like, say, different, like restrictions. So it's open to, say, 10 or 15 years down the road, possibly changing to something, you know?
Right. Generally, as I understand it, the rule is that the rezoning runs with the land. So once you open it up to a C2, anything that's a permitted conditional special exception, you would be permitted to do that. However, my clients are willing to enter into a developer's agreement or some type of an agreement with the municipality that that property will only be used as a funeral home and as an accessory use. If the use is ever changed, if for some reason they're looking to be out of the business or something like that, the property could revert to the R1. Now, I can tell you, I will offer this to you. Because we have indicated that that's an accepted condition, and that we, as the developer, owner of the property, are willing to enter into that, that removes it from the general rule that it runs with the land. That condition, it would be in place, there would be an agreement. If for some reason that use has changed, because I can understand the use table, although it doesn't appear there's any residents here, the use table for a C2 allows numerous things.
Quite a bit.
Yeah, from the shopping center to a bank to a whole lot of things.
Right.
And that's why the use of a funeral home for that piece of property is probably the least intrusive use in a C2 that you can have for that property. The traffic would be regulated. It's almost as an extension of a residential use type of thing. So, but I, believe me, I understand that concern.
Are we able to enter into that type of an agreement, given the ordinance restrictions?
The property owner could do that with a deed restriction. I don't know how that would stand up in court if the property was ever sold. You know, a future owner could maybe have that undone through a court decision because restrictions and conditions cannot be put on a rezoning. But if it's part of the deed, it may, it may hold more weight.
I'm, obviously, you have to make the decision, and I knew that was going to be a concern and wanted to address that. I have made that presentation or pitch on behalf of other clients for property. It is a separate agreement, as any agreement can be enforced because if the municipality is part of an agreement, just the same way as if you have a developer's agreement and they're supposed to put in certain sidewalks and things like that, if they don't do it, you enforce it. And if that covenant is placed in a deed or added to the deed, then it's enforceable. As I said, I'm offering that to you. I understand, you know, you're looking at it from that. Because you, I'm sure you don't want, in a residential neighborhood, some of those things will be allowed in the C2. And the neighbors would be concerned about that, rightly so.
Right.
So, to try to take care of that concern, we're willing to enter into that agreement. And if it's not used as a funeral home and that accessory use that flows with a funeral home, it goes back to the residential zoning.
How about the operation of the crematorium? I mean, what is, you know, from start to finish, once a body is put in that state, what happens?
Well, the crematorium would be an accessory use to the funeral home. Once there's a separate entrance, if the body is taken into that separate entrance, prepared, the incinerator or furnace
Right.
is enclosed completely in the building. Now, there is not a crematorium there, and that would be down the line somewhere, depending on the business plan, finances, all of those type of things. Now, it would just be used as a funeral. But the building is set up so there is a bottom area that will allow that access. As I said, the body comes in, it's taken care of. The process itself for the, into the incinerator may, may take, you know, an hour or so, depending, maybe it's a little longer, but it's high. There would be regulations that we would run through, necessary for regulations. It would be enclosed. The smoke stack that's necessary, it can be limited in height, and the cremation process does not emit the type of smoke that you would think comes out of it. It's very little nowadays with the type of furnaces that are created.
So if they were to, down the road, apply, would they have to come through the, through the?
Not necessarily.
Municipality again, to have that approved, to make it a crematory?
Our current zoning ordinance does not address crematoriums. Now, we'll let you know, we are in the process of revising our zoning ordinance and hope to have that done by the end of the year. And crematoriums will be addressed, so there will be restrictions and different conditions for crematoriums coming up. But if it is approved right now, it would be approved without, our current, our current zoning ordinance does not address crematoriums. So it would just follow any federal and state regulations.
No, I mean, I'm, on behalf of my clients, we wanted to be upfront with that. And obviously, you know, not trying to hide anything. It is an accessory use. My understanding, the law provides that crematoriums are accessory uses to funeral homes. But we are primarily here seeking that rezoning for the use as a funeral home.
Right.
And if it is, whatever it may be, it may not be for a couple of years, and if those conditions are in place, then I think that to operate as a crematorium, you have to show that you're able to meet those, those conditions, including such things as, you know, the crematorium hours of operation, the smoke stack, it's all enclosed in a building, those type of things that are the conditions, I'm sure that the municipality is looking at.
Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to come up and say anything?
This is Mr. and Mrs. Law.
Right, I mean, I didn't know if they wanted to come up and, you know, speak.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I need to sign in.
Hi. Yes, you have to sign in and state your name.
Thank you. The only thing I want to say is going back to the agreement for changing if we sold it or something like that. The building we're in right now did have that type of agreement in Penn Hills that we couldn't, they did it previously, that when it was bought, it had to stay as a funeral home. It still has to be a funeral home, and that's something that we have done and would do. And that he presented to you is, we knew that may be an issue with the community. But again, we don't have any, there is, for us, we don't want it to be anything but a funeral home. So if somebody did want to come in, we would do the same stipulation. So we're okay with that as far as, and again, we don't know what the future holds, but that's not our intent. We want it to be a funeral home. We want to bring it to the community, we want to help the community around. We actually service a lot of people in Monroeville, in Penn Hills, that are in your community. So that's why we wanted to come that direction. Just saying that.
Thank you for coming out, too, and, you know, thinking about putting a business here in Monroeville. We appreciate that.
Right.
And we've had a lot of people that's asked us why we haven't come to Monroeville. You know, so that's, you know, we're going to do something actually closer to the city or even in Penn Hills, open up a bigger place in Penn Hills. But a lot of our clients come out of Monroeville and ask us why, and actually found the building for us, so I just wanted to bring that up.
Do you also have other funeral homes within the region?
We have a funeral home in Penn Hills. My husband can talk more on our business if you're interested as far as the family, it's a family business through my husband. Right now, we solely, we were in Wilkinsburg, we moved to Penn Hills. We had two, but then we combined it under our names from his family for the two of us.
Very nice. While you're there, does your other operation have a crematorium?
We do not have a crematorium. And again, like Tom said, that is not our first and immediate interest. It's not my interest at all, but my husband's, which, we're talking about that. But it's solely for us right now. We want to have a larger space as far as funeral homes and be able to, again, we have a number of clients coming out of, I had somebody the other day who was at the mail shop, and she said, "Did you open a place in Monroeville yet?" Because we have a lot of people who have asked us to come this direction.
The smoke stack was mentioned. I assume there's scrubbers and filters on that for ash. What about odor?
So, there is, and I recently graduated in 2019 from mortuary school. My husband's been in business a long time. We don't have a crematory. I have toured the crematories and have been in crematories. They don't emit a lot of odor at all because, you would be familiar with it, but the heat that actually is used to incinerate is so strong and so high that it's almost gone within an hour.
Sure.
So, and it, and the way the machine works, it actually draws in any odor, and then it's filtered before it comes out. So it doesn't like stink the place, it doesn't stink the place. You wouldn't smell it.
There's very little noise associated with that process. I mean, it's, it's like a...
You have to come forward.
If you're going to speak, you need to be closer to the microphone.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry.
No, no, I have to say.
I just said there's very little noise, if any, that's associated with the actual process, and it's all contained inside. And of course, any, like any other business, if it is approved, it has to meet all the noise requirements, the odor requirements, things like that that would be in your ordinance, so.
Thank you.
This is Mr. Law.
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening.
State your name, sir.
I'm Dwight M. Law. I'm part of a Law family. And we are, we've established our first funeral home in 1929 in Washington, Pennsylvania. Then we, we've operated establishments in Denora, Brownsville, Wilkinsburg, Erie, and currently in Penn Hills. To put it in perspective, to speak to the issue as far as, our current funeral home right now is under an agreement that it can't be, it's Old Socksman Funeral Home on Frankstown, but you're all probably familiar with it. But it originally was established that it can't be operated with, for nothing other than a funeral home. All right? But to speak to the issue as far as the emissions, as far as the crematory is concerned, you know, the, the technology today is, it's not, you don't have the smoke. I'm not going to say it's zero emissions, but it's probably bordering on that.
Okay.
And, but again, we've been in business close to 100 years now, and our, all of our places have been fairly successful. And when we come in, when we come into a community, we don't, you know, we, our goal, our plan is to become part of the community.
Sure.
And we have a track record that speaks of that. And as, I'm not going to be naive, we know that as far as the black migration, and let me speak to that, the black migration, you know, funeral homes and churches are pretty much the only, we won't say industries, but that are still segregated. And we have a number of our clients who are moving east, Turtle Creek, Pitt Karen, and what have you. And we've had a number of people that have asked us to come out, and...
Well, your, your history speaks volumes, and it's good to see that, you know, there's a long family history there with the business. But would anybody else like to ask any other questions?
I just have one other question. In regards to how you described the smoke stack and so forth, and that being right behind there being a residential area, during, when that time would come, if, you know, let's just say we're down the road with that and the crematorium is built, with those residents that are right behind here, I guess a concern would be, what if, you know, there's a family gathering or these people are at, sitting on their deck at night, or just that neighborhood in general? Are they going to know that this is what's going on?
The current technology is, it could be going on, and they wouldn't have a clue because the smoke, the smoke stacks are, they have to be lower than the building. You follow me? So it would be unobtrusive, and they wouldn't be able to tell the difference, really, with the current technology being what it is.
There are also Commonwealth and federal regulations in the operation of crematoriums, particularly from the DEP that regulates emission particles and things like that. The crematorium...
If you want to use that, just give him a second, he'll zoom in.
Just, this is, this is where the building sits. The residences are primarily back here. The smoke stack would be back, I can show you the photo, but on the rear of the building. And there would, there would be unlikely any smoke that would infiltrate anywhere in any of the residential areas.
Including the ones across the street in Haymaker.
Yes.
Correct.
And it, whoops, I'm sorry. Yeah. And as you all know from familiarity with this area, I mean, you can look at the map and, you know, the residences are considerably farther away than what may be depicted on the map, just given the proximity and the, in fact, all of the residences down in this bottom area, the driveways and the front of the residence, residences are all on Colgate.
Jared, can you put that drone picture back up on the, on the screen? He has like an aerial, you can see the, that's Colgate on the, towards the bottom of the picture. And the big white building is down on Moss Side, and where the red pinpoint is, is where the current church is located. So you can see there is a substantial vegetative buffer between the existing building and those homes.
When the, when the trees are filled out like that with that natural buffer, those residents that would be toward the bottom, you cannot even see the building. I mean, it's, it's completely, I went, I have a couple of pictures here to just, to give you an idea, and I did this specifically in March when some of the vegetation was not as in full bloom.
Give them a second to zoom in on it.
You can see to the right, that's, that's the corner of the paved parking lot. The property, the Law's property goes all the way down into that gully to the left, and all the trees are all in there. So there's some of the, the back of the houses that you can, you can see, but it's a considerable distance. And as I said, when the, when the trees are in bloom, you know, you can't see the Law property. And of course, if there's a requirement or suggestion that, you know, because it's now a commercial activity, specific buffer zone, so what type of trees would have to be in there, what type of bushes, there would be compliance with all of that. And as I said, I, you know, we wanted to address that concern about, well, once you rezone, how do you go back? Because that is a big concern for any municipalities and have been through it a number of times. And we, I can provide the board, counsel, the solicitor, whomever you would like, with a draft of the agreement, any suggestions to bind it in. But I think you further testimony from both Mr. and Mrs. Law, you know, they, they are willing to commit to that. They want to be a presence, a helpful presence, a useful presence in the community to serve. They want to be a presence, a helpful presence, a useful presence in the community to serve the residents, and to do so in a responsible way, so.
If you have a draft agreement, that would be beneficial to
Yep.
get me a copy of that, and I can have our solicitor look it over, and we can go from there.
So, we appreciate your presentation and all your information, and I'd like to know if anybody would like to recommend the approval of 22-1-Z, Law Funeral Home. Anybody like to?
And just so that you guys know, you don't have to, I mean, you could table it, or you could
We could table it.
You could table it.
Okay.
Recommend denial, or recommend
Somebody like to recommend a table for further
I agree.
review of this agreement, possibly, and the additional.
Wait, wait.
First?
We have to have a formal
Roll call?
Motion.
We have to have a formal motion?
Motion to table?
I'll make a motion to table the applicant's information for additional support documents.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Somebody has a second?
Second? Roll call?
Ms. Kribda?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrence?
No.
Mr. Massong?
Yes.
Mr. Bertoni?
Yes.
I do have one more question.
Yes, sir.
What's involved in modifying the deed or adding this addendum to it, that it would never revert back to, to commercial, or that it would?
Well, we can place a covenant in the deed, neither file a corrective deed or a further informative deed, so that that covenant's there, the property is only to be used for the use of a funeral home and any accessory uses pursuant to the
Is that only one deed?
Yes.
Okay.
That deed would be recorded at the county.
Right.
And anybody that did a title search on that property, that would be revealed, that that restriction is on that property.
As I said earlier, our current property in Penn Hills actually has that same covenant applied to it, and
That would, that would be an indenture that would be attached to that deed, am I right? Okay.
That's correct. And that covenant runs with the land, so it's, it addresses the concern that the board has.
We see this more frequently with parkland. If somebody wants to donate 50 acres of property, they'll have the deed rewritten, that it can only ever be used for a park, it can never be developed. So, it's not uncommon to have something like that added to a deed.
For information purposes, when we address that, and I'll work with your zoning officer, is there any other information that the board is looking for that you would like to address?
That would be, that would be the council now, correct?
Well, it's officially been tabled, so they will come back to plan a commission next month.
Okay.
And if you have any additional items you would like, you could make that known now, or you can get that information to me before the next meeting, and I can pass it along.
I'd like to ask about the crematory. Do you have any, I assume there's printed restrictions, or modifications, or whatever that would take there. Maybe you could find a recap of something like that to
In addition to the draft agreement, could you get us something from the state or county, guidelines for crematoriums?
That shouldn't be any problem.
It's new to us, we don't have any information on this.
That shouldn't be any problem, I can pull that together and supply it, and
It might work as a positive for you to see that there's not much happening there.
Right.
Thank you.
If you want to speak, you have to come to a microphone.
Sure, come on.
I see your concerns with the crematory, with the crematory. Two things. I think you mentioned you don't have anything in place right now for crematories. And one thing we would have to do, if we do put a crematory in, it would be probably after you have, you have a guideline, because we have no intention on doing that right away. Just even financially, it's not something we are even looking to do, like when we open.
Right.
That, just so you know. Also, the other thing is for longevity, just so you know, we plan this to be in our family for generations. It's not something we're trying to establish and then sell off. I know a lot of funeral homes do that, when they do, they do sell it to another funeral home, but we want to keep it with our family. We have an older daughter in school now, we have a brother-in-law that works with us, my brother works, so it's something we're trying to establish, to stay in the community. I'm from Penn Hills, I'm from, you know, this area, I went to school out here, so it's something we're trying to establish. So, again, we completely knew you would be concerned about
Certainly.
that the residents, when we bought, they're far enough, going back with the crematory, if we did put one on site, they wouldn't even see it. There's, it would be probably in the back of the building, or in the, we got four acres in the grass, where they wouldn't even know it was even there. We could probably do it overnight, they wouldn't know it was there. But just so you know that.
We do, we appreciate your commitment.
But again, our main concern or priority is a funeral home, that's, that's what we do.
The crematories, I mean, we would like to do it down the line, but it's not like, that's what we're going to be doing.
By the time, we would be interested in doing that, your guideline would be certainly established by then.
We do appreciate your commitment, and the tabling will just give you the opportunity to bring forward some additional support, and we can consult with our solicitor on those, that situation.
Sure, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
From my knowledge, just as far as crematories locally now, I know, back in time, I guess it was almost like the steel mill output, but there's, I think Job has one, there's crematories all over, and people, I haven't heard any complaints the past 10, 15 years.
Well, I have faith it will be done respectfully
With the technology.
to the neighbors and to anyone else, if that should be the case.
That's why we wanted to raise it up front, and not come back and say, you know, whatever
I appreciate that.
get a foot in the door and see what happens from there, this is the plan. But the funeral home is the main emphasis, and who knows what, what may, business-wise or economy-wise may happen, and, but we'll, I'll provide the documentation to your zoning officer and
We appreciate that.
and solicitor, and if any other questions, the board, if you can pass those along, so we're in a position to answer those, we certainly would appreciate that.
Certainly.
You know, we, initially, we got into a bidding war with a land developer for this property, so, FYI.
That's, that's what happens, and Monroeville's very, it's a, building up.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, counselor.
Thanks for coming back.
Thank you very much, just for the record, as I indicated, I gave the core reporters part of the record our exhibits and the photos, and I'm sure she has copies of them, can be maintained with those records, so. Thank you all very much for your time, and we appreciate all your help and guidance.
Thank you for your presentations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, we have, the next applicant is, is there anybody here to speak?
I do not see them present.
Do they, we don't need to have them here?
We don't.
Okay.
We can act.
So, it's 22-2-sub, it's Constantino Consolidation Plan. Applicant is requesting preliminary and final subdivision approval to subdivide and consolidate tax parcels 977-N-347, 978-A-389, first track, and with 978-A-389, second track, into one lot totaling 2.121 acres. The property is located on 4334 Northern Pike, in a C2 business commercial zoning district.
If you'd like, I can put the plan up on the dais and present briefly on the applicant's behalf.
That'd be good.
I think that's a good idea for anyone watching on TV.
Right. Welcome, Mr. Wildon.
Thank you, thank you. So, this is, this is the plan. And just to orient everybody in the audience, this is at the corner of Circle W Drive, which used to go back to the Westinghouse in Northern Pike, it's essentially across from Coral Funeral Home. So, the, it's an existing property, it has some vacant buildings on there, they have recently been demolished, and the applicant property owner would like to consolidate these three parcels into one parcel, and I assume that's to make it more sellable. The municipality doesn't have any issues with the proposed consolidation, so I would recommend approval.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Wildon?
No. No questions?
You said three properties?
There's, on their subdivision plan, it shows three properties.
Two are in the back.
Oh, okay.
And one is in the back.
They have the same tax parcel ID number, but it shows property lines in between, so there may have been something weird that happened back in time.
It's just a convenience thing, it's to make it all one.
Yep.
So, it can be
They're just trying to clean it up.
Are they looking at developing or selling?
They haven't, they didn't indicate.
Okay.
They don't have to for subdivision, it's just a subdivision.
All right.
This is strictly for property lines, that's all.
I will motion to approve.
Well, I'd like, you have a question?
To approve?
Recommend appro, I'd like to recommend approval of the 22-2 subdivision of Constantino Consolidation Plan. Do I get a
And Sharon will do roll call?
Mr. Walker, second to that.
So, it's been motion to approve in a second, and now we'll do roll call?
Motion approved?
Okay.
Motion approved?
Ms. Kribda?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Massong?
Yes.
Mr. Bertoni?
Yes.
Thank you.
See you next month.
With that, we would like to adjourn the meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Some second.
Second.
Adjourned.
Meeting adjourned.
Okay.
Thank you.